We spent it on, so we have every site had one of those emergency radios.
Why don't we look into where are the radios?
Yeah, the biggest thing is, Mr. Brodsky, how many years old are these radios?
Yeah, probably way outdated now.
I would say that.
Probably eight years ago.
I guess, yeah. So I would say this is an area we need to really focus on if we have an emergency. A decon radio would probably run you around a hundred dollars and it can be frequency connected with the EOC and the Clay County Sheriff's Office, I believe, and also fire and rescue. They could, everyone can have the same frequency and same communication, but we can look and determine if that's a point.
And they won't be that old because I wouldn't have been president for four years when this was a conversation I had as president.
There have been times that I know that they were in use because we would have something
Yes, ma'am.
Come up.
Something on campus and they did use them.
The P E teacher, for instance, there was communication.
Although, yeah, we still have those on campuses depending on the school.
Yeah, these were strictly emergency radios.
School purchased.
Thank you for looking into that for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions on this side?
The good thing is we're doing a little down any areas that are in progress and we're continuing to be in compliance. Next one is the Personnel Consent Agenda. From my side, nothing that's...
There'll be one addition to it when the Thursday upload occurs. Food, the food truck manager job description, remember the food truck and that whole idea? Okay. We're putting it in the correct format now and it'll be on there Thursday when we reload it back up, so that'll be something different from what you see right there.
All right, C4. C4 is agreement between the School Board, Parents and Associates. This is a professional development for elementary teachers that will work, focus on number talks, which is all about mental math. It dovetails nicely with Intel as well, just another avenue to provide professional development to our teachers to really have mathematical conversations for them to continue to understand the conceptual, the conceptual work within our classrooms, to have mathematical dialogue with our students and to have that structured collaborative outlook for kids to work collectively through mathematical processes. I'm starting, anything else on that?
It's an intermission that Clay's been doing for a couple of years. We've served over 241 teachers. I think you had a whole bunch in your numbers earlier.
I did.
So that'll bring us to an extra 100 teachers that we train in that. And we all start buying the books so that they can actually learn the work from the author herself. So they're very excited about it and it's always, there's always a waiting list.
My hope, I should do that number two. We only did 41 teachers.
She does 50 sessions, so we do two half-day sessions, so we pack the house up.
Yeah, teachers rave about it, so it's always selling.
Very good, thank you.
C5 is affiliation agreement between the School Board of Clay County and Liberty Ambulance Services. As you know, at Clay High School, we have the Academy of Health Science, I mean, at Orange Park High School, we have the Academy of Health Science and they are offering a coursework for emergency management response program. And Liberty Ambulance Services would like to come in and provide hands-on training for clinical hours for our students for the, to interact with the ambulance and this will allow them to, to really work to have better knowledge when they go and take the CTE assessment and earn industry certification. So it's a, it's a pretty cool start. I only have one section of this, but it's a start and hopefully it will continue to evolve through this relationship.
We haven't used any other ambulance services up to this point?
Um, no, ma'am.
What schools will be affected by this?
Just Orange Park, yes.
Because we have the, is it the, I forget what the academy's called, but it's with the police office or the sheriff's office at Clay High?
Yes, ma'am.
The criminal justice one, but yeah.
Right, would this not, I mean, I guess it's, I guess that's...
That's police versus, yeah.
Yeah, this is a pretty neat opportunity for kids. This is, we moved to figure out how we can offer another avenue for kids, the RCT program, so this medical response is really good for hands-on and they're going to pay for all the train, provide support, their, their ambulance, their personnel.
I understand that the Criminal Justice Academy at Clay High is always packed out, so if we could have another emergency management type...
It's actually an EMT academy at Clay High.
At Clay High.
Yeah, so the EMT academy.
And we'll get, we can talk to, we can talk to Liberty and see if they want to connect Number six is just advertisement for our ESE and Student Services as mission and placement manual. This manual is 379 pages. We have not, there was no changes to this manual in reference to placement for our student body within this, within our organization. So this is all state board rules and regulations and statutes are embedded. Just talks about the MTT, MTSS process and identification for students and the processes we have to take for special policies and procedures within the school district. All right, approval for, C7, approval for out-of-county travel. This is all connected to chorus, band, dance and ROTC that hadn't taken place yet. We do have one school we will continue to work through, which is Middleburg High School. It's already taken and openly, ahead of all the law tournament that they came up. We're working with their staff to make sure that they have the appropriate information in at an appropriate time so it doesn't come to us in lag.
Once again, volunteering, Saint Patrick's Day Parade, Chicago. Awesome. I'll be happy to go, happy to go.
Yeah, it's really cool. I mean, they've got some really cool places and good for them.
That is awesome, that's huge. That is a huge parade.
I'll let Mr. Dick know. Okay, C8 is professional development, once again, for mathematics, it's Intel Math. To date, I believe, we have trained around 113 teachers within our school district. We see that from our pre-assessment to teachers when they come in to, before this assessment and then when they take a post-assessment when they leave, we see the kids average, I mean, teachers are averaging a 20-point increase through their knowledge and they can continue to grow to conceptually understand mathematics and this is, our goal ultimately is to, to help build the foundations from K8 and then have a turnkey where we see more kids are being, becoming proficient on math assessments along with algebra-one assessments, which we saw a dive and continue, you know, from the previous data sets. But this is great, people rave again about this professional development and this will once again will be paid through DODIA grants for this year. C10 is our warrants and vouchers for August 2017.
Ms. May, does she have a question?
Yeah, allocations, did we not add allocations?
We added...
For the 22 teachers?
You're on this agenda tonight. This is October 5th.
I'm sorry.
Next month.
My mistake, sorry. I'm very excited for 22 new members. Can't wait to meet them.
I'm sending my email out this morning, I promise. If I was in town, I'd crash your party. All right, sorry. C11, C10 or C11?
C10.
Okay, I'm gonna go back. C10 vouchers and warrants for, for August 2017. C11 is just our monthly property report for furniture and equipment. C12 is monthly property report for AV material within the organization. I'm not trying to go fast, stop me any time.
No, you're good.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Monthly report for, for software is C13.
Do we have any of the, I guess it might be software, sorry. You said software and it came up. Have we received any of our computers yet?
Computers are actually, yesterday or today?
Today, today.
Our computers, today, today?
For our last big quarter.
Yeah, they're, they're in this week and we'll finish them and...
And to date, we have 11 schools that we, in the last couple of weeks, that are all wireless now. Yeah, thank you so very much for approving our strategy. We just can't, I mean, now we got the, they can be...
We just have a book and a half of store.
Yeah, we, I mean, for...
That interrupted our flow.
Mr. Bunkley's team, for them to have 11 schools in a short period of time to get all wireless is going to be awesome, so hats off to him and his team and Tommy and what they're doing and Mr. Bunkley, so doing good work. C14 is monthly property for August 17 of vehicles. C15 is deletion of items within our organization. C16 is pre-qualification for, of contractors, which are monthly basis and annually renewed. C17 is just completion of our county-wide front office security entrance, entrance work, which is at five schools in the district office to make sure that we are protecting our assets and our facilities. It just has the name of the schools are impacted. C18 is completion of Dr. Reddington's fire alarm replacement. We know that issues with that, but it is, but it is being replaced through insurance thanks to the good work of our team and then the proactive of us. C19 is completion of Middleburg High School culinary renovation. C20 is some change order for that same project, Medical, Middleburg High School culinary arts renovation. We had some issues with fireproof beams that weren't available within, that we found. We had some code issues and had the, our grease traps did not meet code, we had to reinvest in those and we had to, to make certain that those two were in compliance. It ended up being a $16,000 change order, but we want to make sure that it's fireproof anytime we're working in facilities with kids. So those change orders are, are in place now and good catch by our team to make sure we're ready. C21 is a ACE testing facility at Plymouth Island High School. It's an architectural contract. We're still waiting for some, we're still waiting for firm and funding, is that correct, Dr. Kent?
That's correct. Actually, we're, Wednesday, tomorrow.
Gotcha.
We're waiting on the selection, so it's placeholder for the ACE testing facility at Plymouth Island High School and the architectural selection is tomorrow. Ms. Carecus is participating with that. So once we get the nominee, we'll insert the nominee.
And to be upfront, as you know, with ACE money, schools can use money as they desire. In this sense, they're going to build a large multipurpose room where they can do a lot of assessments, they assess glide kids there. We can beg Tommy and do some other stuff in that room. But it's going to be nice and they oftentimes have major overflow in the TTC, which is always loaded with professional development, so, you know, hats off to him for being creative and staff and in order to do this. We have, Ms. Bush, do we want to talk about two other items or a couple of items now or we, we'll go through discussion?
Oh, you can.
Okay, well, we'll go through discussion and we can end on it and then I can get direction for the board. All right, D1 is special action. Is it right now? Fingers crossed.
A week and a half to go.
Sorry.
Enough said on that.
That's right, thank you. D2 is public hearing for approval advertising instructional resource manual.
Is this something we've never had before?
That's all, you've always had it. It's just been a massive, massive document.
Okay.
It's been, I mean, I felt like this has been on the agenda for three months now.
I mean, it's a final, it's a final, right.
I'm hoping so. I can see it again, I don't know.
See, that's what we approved for advertising.
Right, right, and I, and I, and this, I didn't say my question properly, I don't think.
Actually, it was on...
It's on?
It was on in August and we were having the public hearing on the September 7th, which would, should have been the September 26th, but we felt like because the date of the public hearing changed, we needed to re-advertise it, so it is...
Yes, that's it.
You just won't go away.
It has been...
Maybe for the sign, you should double check.
I know, right? I mean, like to the...
This was something different, I apologize.
Sorry, like, I mean, like last night, I was a little bit on the... Let's come back to this, Mrs. E.
If you come back for any reason other than the re-advertising, that's all, just following policy.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a couple of items that I will need some guidance and help on and, and sorry, it's been kind of crazy with having two in a short period of time, what goes on what and nonetheless, we go back and we'll get better. There was a, we need to put an item that was on the, good catch, Ms. Gilhouse, that was on the September, should go tonight, which should be going to October, which is the assessment calendar. So I want to be able to move that from the tonight's board meeting to October's board meeting. Good thing because the state just sent us some information about updating testing because we had the hurricanes that are pushing some dates back. I will tell you openly, we, I don't know, Ms. Bush, do you have the new calendar that you can use?
I do, I printed them. You actually have the item that looks like this, where I marked September 26 off and I put October 5th. The one that's attached to it, that's stapled to it, is the old one. They just sent the new one, the new one has new written on it, so you'll know.
And so as the chair, I've already given permission to strike it from tonight's agenda and put it on the October 5th.
Thank you, ma'am.
So I spoke with Ms. Bush yesterday, so that's already...
Thank you. So for, and I'll talk a little about the assessment calendar. We knew last year that, I think, the biggest angst, we felt like we were, had too much testing and we were always testing. I think it's just the way the calendar was set up. It was just in the middle of nine weeks and a quarter and it just kept on. This year it's more intentional, by state statute, you got to have a progress monitoring plan, so we did baseline, which we take, you know, we assess in the first couple of weeks, other than kindergarten, and then we have a mid-year and then the end of the year and that's the only assessments that we have. We use the baseline, just pure baseline data, just for us to, sure teachers can have and use. We do not grade them, we, teachers don't grade them, we just have it for informational purposes only. And then we do do a, an assessment piece of progress monitor for mid-year to see how well our kids are developing, so we can really, how we need to work with their support in schools, teachers, content, grade levels and how we deploy support staff at the district level to go in and push if we need to have a triage opportunity and a grade level or set of schools. And then we have a post-assessments, which will have, will help us with third grade retention and looking at other indicators to see how well that are, we did at the end of the year. And then we'll try to use some of the, those assessments are not just assessments in isolation, it's more of eye-ready and I achieve, which gives us a diagnostic for kids and it tells them where they are academically and it builds them a scaffold approach to allow them to be on grade level and have enrichment opportunities as well, which teachers are using, you know, as much and often as they can in their classrooms. So more intentional, I would say. I would say it's not ultimately a reduction in assessments, we may be on the same. And on here you'll see the minutes and hours, it ends up being like around nine hours a year that we assess in certain grade levels, but we just had the max. We take an eye-ready assessment, we say we give you 90 minutes for it, you know, take 90 minutes. But we want to be honest and put the max of the window that we give and so that's the worst-case scenario.
Questions, office?
I just have a, this is going to be a PR issue because if you look at the chart that you put together last year, kindergarten, for example, three hours testing. Now, if you look at the minutes on this calendar, it's 540, so that's almost double.
Right.
So the message that is going to be portrayed to the county is we're doubling the amount of testing that we're doing.
Yeah, that's just allowing us to have, I mean, kindergarten, it takes, they do, we're doing, we're doing eye-ready for kindergarten.
Doing eye-ready for kindergarten and so it is an increase in the amount of time, but with the program, you have to take the diagnostic in order for the student to get their pathway to use the program. So it's kind of taking the progress monitoring that we were doing previously and taking that away to only use the eye-ready as the progress monitoring, since that's part of the program that they would have to do anyway.
Right, no, I understand all that, it's just how do you communicate that?
Yeah, the biggest thing is, is to show them it's just not a test in isolation, but it's more of a learning tool, it's a diagnostic.
Which is great, it's an improvement, I love your thinking, but when you look at the amount of time...
And I believe that it's, it's going to be, it's going to be embedded anyways in rotational opportunities, so they have an option to do a whole group where they can test in, you know, two or three kids at a time, so why teacher doing a small group but another set of kids? So it's just another part of their rotation, so it's not like we're, I get it from a theory piece, hey, more hours, but I think it's, it's better designed and intentional to allow them to, to have a greater learning path and a greater structure to help them, help them not only be at grade level, but also provide additional opportunities to, to grow into, actually.
Is this considered a standardized test when it's specifically used the way that it was being used?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a, I mean, really, we didn't have to list all of it, but it isn't diagnostic, so we wanted to make sure that we were being transparent and put it, included into this assessment piece.
I think it's going to be key to communicate with parents about what this means and that it's an improvement and not a...
Yep, no, I agree.
Ms. Paula, did you have...
Oh, yes. I'm trying to keep my mouth up. The perception from the teachers as well is that last year you came in, you took out Performance Matters, everyone said, wow, that's awesome, and now you're pushing in more diagnostics. And I'll just use, I, you know, I like to use fifth grade because that's my little area and we test in four areas, in writing, in reading, in math and in science. And when you're doing Performance Matters in science and you're doing eye-ready and reading and I achieve 3,000 in math, I believe, or Performance Matters, I mean, there's one, there's got to be...
Sure, eye-ready.
And eye-ready in math and writing and then we're going to do that again. Okay, so now we've just been sit back a week, obviously with the hurricane. Even before that, though, you're doing testing in those four areas at 180 minutes, let's say each test, or 90 minutes. That's a big chunk out of the day and that's a lot of testing. And then you're going to ask us to, to do this again in December and January and then we're going to, in April and March, start into that full FSA system. And my question is, is there a final test in eye-ready that they have to take? Are we using the FSA as the final test? And is the FSA, the FPA, the final test in science without taking any additional testing after that?
Well, the issue comes is that you got to have a progress monitoring plan.
Correct, I understand that.
So you got to have, based on, you got to have mid-year.
And last year we were able to take that mid-year out.
Correct, well...
I mean, in some respects, we were, we took that...
At the end of the, yeah, one or two, we did.
That Performance Matters equation out.
Right, and then the other side is that we have got through our CAS committee, we've got to select how teachers will have a performance indicator. So now that we have the option of not using VAM, we will work with our subcommittee to determine, so that means you're going to have to have a beginning of the year assessment and the end of the year assessment. So in order, so this is where I, why not, I mean, for me, I didn't add any additional, you know, progress monitoring assessment, PM assessments, but we just use diagnostics we're only going to use to help with a learning path versus just having an isolated assessment.
So not having used eye-ready, just to put this in my head as well, when someone, when a student takes eye-ready at the beginning of the year, throughout the year, as they take eye-ready, as they progress through eye-ready, it's self-assessment as well as that, correct?
Every day?
And they then, so is there an assessment per se, going back to what you were saying for kindergarten, for instance, is there assessment mid-year that's going to be separate from what they would normally be doing in an eye-ready environment? Does that makes, do you know what I'm asking?
I think what you're, I just want to clarify, so for kindergarten, for example, they will take the eye-ready diagnostic for reading and math three times a year. So there's a baseline that we take in the beginning and there's a mid-year test to make sure that the system is aligning correctly because it does monitor them daily, they have lesson pass rates, so it does monitor that. Then they get the mid-year to make sure that all of that kind of syncs up, to make sure they have all of those paths correct and then it goes through, we do take the third one for K through three because we were talking about, in case there was a different performance measure that we wanted to use for the student performance measures for those teachers. We did make the decision in K through, sorry, in four through eight, we're only using eye-ready for math. So we did take out the third diagnostic because we were going to use the FSA test for that, so they don't have to take the third one because at that point, it's not going to give them any instructional decisions at that late point in the year, so they're going to use the baseline for the next year to do those assessments. So we did take out that 90-minute test for grades four through eight because they'll be getting their kind of end of year information based on FSA.
So that would be in math?
Yes, ma'am.
And reading?
In reading for four through eight, they have the achieve 3,000, they will take the post-test for that, it's a shorter test, it's 45 minutes. That gives them kind of a lexile level that they can use to go into their summer reading and help teachers identify books that will be...
And then that, will that be used as a baseline for them, for instance, from fifth grade, or let's say fourth grade? Will that be used from a fourth grade baseline to the fifth grade?
It will, in fifth grade, they'll come back for baseline because we do know that over the summer, there are some changes and we want to make sure they have their correct reading.
Yeah, you're right, dudelular. I mean, the biggest thing, we want to make certain that we have a return on investment with funding as well, so while the baseline and mid-year are, could be, are potential predictors of how well kids can do academically and where we need to problem solve and assist and highlight and duplicate a cell break, we want to make sure that we have a beginning of the year and end of the year to determine whether or not this, I hate to say it, this product is actually working for our organization and helping us internally. And if it's not, it's a, a different conversation about how we're supporting it, how are we implementing it and then whether or not this product actually matches with standards. I know it does and it has great predictability, but I want to be able to see it and then be able to say, hey, we have baseline data this year, let's, let's do that analysis from baseline this year and continue to look at the, the structures to determine whether or not, how our cohorts are doing every single year.
The, going back to the kindergarten issue?
I'm thinking 90-minute test.
No, when you're dealing with 18, and I mean, it would be nice to know just 16...
It's not a whole, it's a 90-minute test, but they're not taking it 90 minutes at one time.
Is this done in small groups? Is this done on the computer?
So it is done on the computer.
It's done in small groups?
It's done based on, it's a school-based decision, so they can do it in small groups, they can do it in whole group in a lab situation, it would be whatever works best for that school and that student base. But eye-ready does recommend the company know, you have to have at least two 45-minute sessions for the younger grades, they would recommend like three 30-minute sessions so that they are not getting that fatigue. It also has kind of built into the program, once they get to a certain point, it gives them like a brain break where they have like a little game that they can play in the system so they're not completely just on that test the whole time. But yes, that's a big deal to, nobody wants to put a kindergartner in a screen for 90 minutes.
Yes, and I...
I can't even believe you put a kindergartner in a whole group and they don't even know what A is yet and, and you sit there and the teacher is in the room and all these kids are on task at a computer, right?
Correct, well, we are giving this, we are giving them the ability to make that decision to do it in small groups and also kindergarten window doesn't open until tomorrow, so they have six weeks where eye-ready also has a kindergarten corner where it has skills that the teachers can use to help students understand what a computer is, what a mouse is, how those things work together, to help get them to that point because everybody recognizes that kids don't come in with the same level of skills, so there's some learning that needs to take place before a student could be successful on a diagnostic and so we've provided that information to the teachers as well.
And do they use the mouse? Because in the past, they've had, some of the kindergarten programs just use a keyboard so that's...
Right, it depends on the, it depends on the device and it depends on the school, so some of them are using trackpad, some of them are using mice and it has tutorials for both.
And their assessment, the kindergarten teacher assessment is not eye-ready, it's a district, district assessment that they, they use. So that's their assessment.
Last, so last year, they used a district-created test in kindergarten.
Correct, that hasn't changed. That's the exact same, that's still there.
That hasn't changed officially. We would have to meet as a CAS committee in order to make that determination.
And I will tell you that, that kindergarten window for the assessment hasn't started yet. It's because we, we wanted to get students in, get them, coach them, familiarize them, understand their skill set and then transition to an assessment because we, there's a number of things that we will teach them, but I hate to, I mean, I'm not saying this to be disrespectful, but these kids are digital natives most of the time, they know how to work that machine and they, and those who don't will provide assistance where needed, so we wouldn't put them in a situation where we didn't believe they would be successful.
Is it more of a challenge, though, at some of our title lines of schools, not everybody has the same opportunity at home?
And most kids are using touchscreen if they're using anything at home. And my kids don't use the laptop.
They don't use a keyboard, they don't use, they use touch...
They're digital natives, but they're, they're...
I would say if we, I would say as we get into this, if we, I mean, we got great teachers, we got great leaders at school, so if we get to a part where we have any issues, we'll reboot, but...
Just probably, like, no.
Yeah, no, and I've, I've lived this before, very self-yed issues with this.
Just know, what I've heard from, from parents in the community is there's too much testing and there's definitely too much computer-based testing.
Of course.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
I think we all agree with that.
At the end of the day, I do not believe, and then, or last year, a whole lot of things coming in to suspend assessments. We didn't understand the validity of it, teachers, and the timing of it was wrong. So, we elected to suspend. I openly say I do not believe that we, this calendar creates over-testing that's not aligned and intentional.
I think the hardest thing, though, Mr. Davis, is it's not the testing. When you say ninety minutes, it takes that kindergarten teacher hours and hours to teach the kids how to take the test, how to use the computer. So, when teachers are saying so much time is in testing is because I have to go practice in the lab. They don't just know how to do that. So, they spend hours and hours practicing with a keyboard, practicing in the lab to take the test. And that's the problem with testing.
Flickers, this year, the state decided to move flickers to an online-based platform as well.
That's a state assessment.
And I would say, I would say to that, I think you're absolutely right. But I also think those are great life skills that we're starting to teach at our early age. So, I think the part of going in and teaching our kids keyboarding and teaching our kids how to use these devices, this is something that's only gonna help them be successful long-term. So, I think that's something, it's just the same as I taught first grade, and I had to practice handwriting, and we had to have the lined paper, and we had to make the letters. So, I think the time that previously we spent on a lot of those kinds of skills, we're just having to rethink of how we teach now. And so, some things like we did with handwriting before, a lot of those same types of things we have to adapt and teach with keyboarding as well.
We are still teaching handwriting.
I'm absolutely, I'm not saying we're not doing it. I'm just thinking if we're gonna give it to these...
So, we're adding something.
We're adding.
We didn't take away handwriting. We still got handwriting going on, now we've added it.
I'm just thinking those are kind of the equivalent, if you're taking a skill set, that was a skill set that we have to have now, but we're adding a skill set to it that is equally as important.
I'm just thinking about kids.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about why we overload kids. They don't get to be kids anymore. And we're doing it in our kindergarten, and we've added this assessment. And I can see if I was a parent, I mean, I wouldn't want my child to be inundated with, I practiced in the lab for five hours. And now I'm gonna take a ninety-minute test, so I'm gonna split it up. I get to, for my enjoyment, I get to do a computer game.
I mean, I would say that I would respectfully push, I mean, I think we're preparing our kids. Really do. I think you're spot on. And then Flickers moves directly to a online assessment, which is state-required. So, we've got to prepare in many ways.
It just seems like kindergarten should be about learning. And I don't think that five hundred and forty minutes of testing sends the message that we're here to make learning fun for kids.
It seems like we've taken a step back, especially after the grandstanding that we did in January of last year where we said we're eliminating all local assessments. And now, we've had it, we've doubled it.
And thinking is not required, it's voluntary. So, you've got some kids that come in with zero skill level. And you're expecting them to sit at a computer quietly and take a test with letters they don't recognize. And I don't, at least with my kids, they learn uppercase first. Keyboard is lowercase. So, you get...
The good thing is, I understand, the good thing is, is with I-Ready, that learning path's gonna help them differentiate and have individual prescribed approach. It's gonna only help them get better and better and better. And, you know, I'll be, when the baseline comes in, can't wait to share it. You'll see tremendous growth because kids will have individualized opportunity to learn. You can, the best learning tool is a great teacher. This is another avenue to have differentiated instruction.
But you're saying individual, and think of the kindergarten teacher with eighteen students, if she only had eighteen, not over. But individual, so that's eighteen children that she's individually teaching. And I know you said she could do small groups, but if they're all on different levels, you know, you might get three or four in a group that maybe you can hold their attention on. I do see this as...
But the problem is, what's the other kid's doing? You've only got a kindergarten teacher there, and I take nice little four on group. I mean, visualize this. That teacher's having a nervous breakdown on what everybody else is doing.
So, I say this, let us get going, and we'll go visit some kindergarten classrooms so you can see it. You've got some great teachers doing some great things, and this is gonna be a great opportunity.
We do, but this is, this is a lot of work. I sat in Ms. Crane's class, I think we've all been in Ms. Crane's class, and I happened to be there one day and stayed after reading so that she could take some of the children and individually do testing at her desk with them. And, you know, I was there to amuse, or not amuse, but monitor what she had assigned for them to do. And I just watched and thought, you know, it wasn't like a quick three-minute. It was ten, twelve, fifteen minutes with this individual child. And, you know, there were sixteen, seventeen others sitting there. So, it's not an easy task.
Our experience so far has been that when there is computerized testing, the kids that are not currently testing are sent to another classroom. And so, they may not be covering the same material in the classroom that they're going into.
Correct.
It just really, and how much time are they spending in that other classroom that's not their teacher, that's not their...
Yeah. I, I say this, I don't, trust me, I appreciate the conversation. It's about gradual release and small-group rotations where you can have, when we have, once we get to the wireless devices, you'll have six or seven computers in a classroom. Teacher will have six kids working on individual pathway learning through I-Ready. I'm just getting examined through I-Ready. Another teacher could pull six additional kids working on certain skill sets and foundations of literacy, while other, while six other kids are working on independent reading or working on the independent standard-based or skill-based remediation within the center group. That's our job to provide support for teachers so that can happen. And that's best practice so we can have small-group instructions take place on a continuous basis. I would say, you know, it's a, you gotta have a beginning assessment, end assessment anyways through CAS. And I-Ready's gonna do a perfect job of allowing a pathway for kids.
Just one more comment, if I may. I am incredibly empathetic to kindergarten teachers. They know it. I mean, there's no way I would ever have taught kindergarten, ever have taught kindergarten. And one of the things that you were talking about, and one of the things that you've been trying to really work together, is the fact that teachers do plan together. Teachers, all of the kindergarten teachers are going through this testing mire. And that's probably the best way to say it because they know they have to get each of those children tested. And they do collaborate, and they do send them to other classrooms. And I would probably go out on a limb and say kindergarten is probably one of the classes that they do truly all sort of teach at the same pace. They're very familiar with who their high kids are, who their low kids are, which kids you can group in this situation that would be able to help each other because there are students that come from a variety of backgrounds. And I admire those kindergarten teachers so much. And would never, I mean, they just, first grade as well, they, they're herding cats. I mean, it is, it is a situation where they have them so organized. And they, I truly believe that teachers understand the need for testing, the need for that baseline testing. It just is time-consuming, it's frustrating. It's a requirement that we have to do, and it's one that we don't like because it does draw us away from the actual teaching side of it. But just as long as you continue to be aware of those feelings and those frustrations, and support as much as possible, that's, that's key.
Yes, ma'am, and I appreciate it. Serena and I, that from your side, have you heard any, anyone speak to...
So, we haven't started the kindergarten window yet for I-Ready. But I will tell you, we did do this at our eight Title I schools last year. And it was, I mean, it's always gonna be challenging at the beginning to get kindergarten in there and using the program. But I always told my kids, and this is the prime of my philosophy, the more you practice, the better you get. So, after they had like a couple of, you know, weeks in there, they did get the hang of it. Our teachers are amazing. They make this work. One of the kind of benefits of the I-Ready system, too, is based on this diagnostic, it actually gives them sample lesson plans and things they can pull. So, when they get the information from the program, it can say, these five students are struggling with knowing the letter K. Here's some information that you can pull to do with them in a small group. So, it gives them some ready-made instruction that they can use with those small groups, too. So, it does give them some instructional help as well. Just from any kids, like you said, sometimes it is herding cats. And those are skills that it's difficult to teach kids, and we have to go through. But again, I think we have amazing leaders, I think we have amazing teachers, and I think that they are taking on the challenge of doing this and working with it because they know getting that individualized information from those students is gonna help them to support them and make progress.
So, the answer to Mr. Davis's question was that teachers are fine with that. The kindergarten teachers are fine.
They haven't started yet.
But you had, no, you had, you had the Title I...
Oh, we didn't train them.
We did last...
So, they are all happy with it?
So, I can't speak for every teacher in the district to say that everybody's happy with it. I think what I can say is that our teachers are amazing in that they are working, they are finding ways to work this so that it does work for them and it does work for their classroom to be able to meet the program requirements.
Could you tell me what state requirement the kindergarten is doing? Besides all this, kindergarten has a state requirement.
Flickers and stuff.
So, they still have, they have Flickers?
So, Flickers is the Florida kindergarten readiness screener. Previously, it was done through the WSS, which was something that they pulled the kids over, and they did kind of an individualized assessment with them that was paper-pencil.
That's what Mrs. Carr just was calling it.
And they put that information into the computer system. Now, what they do is the students take it online. It's about a twenty-minute assessment that they do, and it's basic, like pick the shape that's this, do, pick this number. So, it's kind of the basic.
So, this will notify the kindergarten, brings all the kids into the computer lab?
So, we recommended that they not do that just because that's a lot of kids to be on the stage at one time and where they have previously been pulling kids one at a time. Most of our kindergarten teachers had two student computers in the classroom and was also recommended trying to do like a small-group rotation. As you're doing your small groups, pulling maybe two students over to those student computers, getting them logged in, making sure that they understood how to do the program, and then giving them the twenty minutes that they're taking the test individually. And that is state, that is, they are, they are amazing. And I would say that's a state, that's a state-required test. So, that wasn't anything that we had control over.
Thank you. Ms. Poye, did you have any other questions?
No.
Does the board want this item to be in the discussion agenda next month? Why don't you just go ahead and put it right in the discussion instead of consent, so it doesn't have to be put in the conference? I would imagine Ms. Condon will want to speak on it, too. Thank you.
All right. There was another one. Mr. Daggett?
Sure. I would like to, and I've spoken with, I've tried my best to speak with each board member on this and with the superintendent. So, it's taken me some time to figure out all these cases that exist out there in what I'll call risk management world, personal injury-type cases. And I'm bringing one to the board. I would like to add to the October 5 agenda a proposed settlement released simply for an upper bound vote. Remember, this is not a SHED meeting, so we don't get to discuss things privately. I can tell you this, that it is, and I'll be happy to discuss further, of course, during the October 5 meeting. It's a state court case that's five years old. It's been languishing. It's a bus accident that occurred. There is arguable liability such that a trial will be going forward, I believe, in March. It's currently set for March. The reason I'm bringing it to you now and didn't have a chance to even discuss the idea of a SHED meeting is that we're going to have to engage in substantial and costly discovery within the next thirty to sixty days, which is going to exceed what we have been given as an offer from plaintiff's counsel. Plaintiff's counsel being an adjunct law school professor, and this case being worked up essentially as a clinical experience for students of fifteen thousand dollars. So, we're getting up to those costs anyway. I can tell you, we will incur those costs in excess of fifteen thousand just in the next thirty to sixty days because of medical examinations that need to be undertaken and so on and so forth. So, I thought that it was best to at least provide a potential out for the board to take action on by way of this proposed settlement agreement, which is essentially a general release. And I'd like to add that to October 5, if possible.
And it's already been. So, we will have it on our October 5 agenda. And if anybody has questions to get with Mr. Daggett, he can explain the details individually to us, and then we'll decide to accept or deny. Mr. Daggett, was there anything else? Did you need to ask for an attorney-client session besides the one we've got scheduled for today?
No.
All right. Mr. Superintendent, anything else?
Yes, ma'am. Last thing, and this is where I just need some guidance from the board. I'm gonna hand out this calendar. So, as you know, we had six days that we missed. And due to Hurricane Irma, and after we looked at the total number of minutes and hours that we have within the school year, we are meeting that threshold. The issue, the concern becomes is that we have eighty-one days in the first semester and ninety-nine days in the second semester. In order to give a semester half-credit, and just get used in high school, you have to have four thousand and fifty minutes on task, minus the hundred minutes that the governor and commissioner waived for the two days. And then now we're at thirty-nine fifty, the number of minutes we have to have. With that said, we are four days short in the first semester. So, we're, and I get it, it's smart because they don't, no one wants to end a quarter when you come back in January. Because in the second quarter, you, they ended in December, and you start fresh in January. What I'm asking the board, and we need to really talk about, me seeking permission to move four days from the end of the second quarter and move it into January, when it would end on January, the second quarter would end on January 9th. And if I did that, that would give me sufficient time, the on-task for semester one and to award half-credits, and then sufficient time in the second semester to award half-credits as well. So, it's not adding days to our calendar or our schedule. It's just moving four days from semester two to semester one.
Say again, when you want to end it?
And it's highlighted on January the 9th. This will not impact in-service days in January or planning days. It would just impact the entire organization and community understanding that the second quarter will go to the 9th. We will, January 9th, we will encourage teachers to continue to use your half-days in December to calculate the information and also your planning day and in-service day in order to have grades finalized by the 9th.
So, finals. They can still do finals prior to Christmas or the holiday.
Yes, ma'am.
They would still have the half-days because there are two or three half-days.
Yep, there's three half-days.
So, that all remains the same.
Yes, ma'am.
We just are physically sort of on paper.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to say it that way, but that's sort of what we're doing. So, if a teacher in whatever, Algebra I, wants to start their second, their next set of information sometime early in January, they could do so.
If a teacher feels their kids are accelerating to the learning, and they want to move their, do their pace in their curriculum, then they can do as they, they need us to do their students.
Got it.
Does this affect junior high as well?
It would affect everyone. Because I don't, what we don't want to do is have, even though high school's kind of driving it, we don't want to have a calendar for high school, for junior high school, elementary, so it's already being slightly...
We will be changing the report card dates. Does that affect the...
I believe so. I mean, I don't know if we can get it developed by then.
I don't think it really affects them. I think the report card date was after, and the way that focus runs now, most things are real-time. When teachers enter it, we don't even send report cards out anymore to the teacher.
We thought about pushing it back because I believe the report card date is the 13th, but the, which is, you know, Saturday, right? And by the end of the day, it's prepared and ready. But I don't, I believe that it'll continuously, the teachers will have it up and running, ready up in this line.
And there's, that's, there's a planning, no, there's a, yes. Wasn't December 15th a planning day?
Yep, we will keep that the same.
That's the end of quarter.
That's the end of quarter. The original.
The original end of quarter, and the end of quarter wouldn't be until the 9th. But, but teachers have the opportunity because when grades end before the holiday Or even the planning day when they come back.
So is this going to be on the October fifth?
Yeah, I'm seeking permission for, yes, ma'am.
And the teachers, the biggest impact with the teachers is they usually wouldn't have a planning day before, and they won't have it. And therefore, we're fine with it. And we'll advertise that so that some teachers, we don't necessarily stay up with everything that you're doing or that's going on. Non-unified.
I'm trying to say that, but I'm trying to save space. So two things, I would, since this doesn't impact until January, I would like for, to take it to the board in October. Once approved, then I can message to the entire organization and to the, and the community, sorry. And sorry, I would have put it on there, but I wanted to see permission first.
Madam Chair.
Can we have an executive session after the October 5 meeting?
Does that work for everybody at the, after the October 5 meeting collective part?
And I, and I have one other item, the evaluation for the school board attorney. You know, I didn't really receive any feedback, so I'm assuming everybody wants that evaluation.
I sent you feedback. Let's use that evaluation and if there's a section in it that you feel doesn't apply, just write NA, not applied. Because there were stuff in there that was more district, and instead of rewriting the whole thing, there's a, you know, let's just use it. And if you feel this is a section, and let's try to get all our feedback by October 1 to.
So how about I resend out the evaluation back again to everybody?
That would be good, thank you.
And then we'll, we'll send it to Ms. Bush, who will correlate that information for.
Because Ms. Bush doesn't have enough.
Right.
So.
Send it back by when?
October 1.
Is that too soon for everybody? It's this weekend, October 1.
Betsy's out of town.
Let's, let's extend it a week.
Ms. Condon's out of town, so.
So what's the following Friday?
No, because I'd be out of the lot.
October 6. That gives us till October 6 to.
So I'll send an email with that, with October 6 in it, an attachment to it.
Does that work for you?
You guys will send it back to Ms. Bush.
Weren't we trying to get you to. I, you had made a recommendation that I followed up on.
What?
To just look at the third section of what he had developed that related just to the lawyer.
Yeah.
And not to the district and everything else. And it was, section three was based on the attorney versus everything else. And that's, I made that recommendation. I was just mirroring what you had said. And do we want this done by October 5th for the meeting?
It should have been done by August. We don't need it for a meeting. This doesn't come to the board at all.
Okay, that's why I was curious. Okay.
This is something that we send to Ms. Bush. She tallies it all. And then we meet with Mr. Daggett and just kind of agree with the superintendent and the board chair and copy everybody on, just to let him know what suggestions you had that were great or need improvement. And that's it. It's just, we were supposed to do it ninety days and then six months.
Wouldn't be after six months before.
So maybe we'll just make this our, you know, six months. And then from that point forward, it's just once a year.
Yes, yes.
Just once a year from that point forward, so. So just send out the original and just put NA for any section you don't want to fill out, feel doesn't apply. And just, you know, send back your feedback. All right, anything else?
Yes, ma'am, I'll have, close the business today. You'll have, we'll update the safety in school chart as requested for backup. And I will review, determine whether or not we can move in a direction with our, our, our new phone system can do the, the one-touch-all, or do we have to go to a different route for our decon radio? And I'll look at EMT, the EMT process for Clay High School. And then, and that's it. Any follow-up you need to me?
Isn't it already EMT access?
I'm just talking about the Liberty ambulance being able to maybe gain access if they have access.
Anything else, girl?
Yes, could you, some of, when the teachers are going to have their final evaluation release? I thought we were going to release that today.
Yeah, so, yeah, I.
You've got to write the email first.
Yeah, so, what'd you say?
I write the email first, but I don't.
Yeah, so the, the email's kind of done. I didn't want to send it there in the school day. So I will probably send it in the evening. I won't be able to stop an instruction to look at. I'll probably send it to Zebra.
Well, that's what they're doing all day today.
I know.
In case you're interested, because that's what my phone is, and the, and the board is aware that we're going to have two hundred and forty-three teachers who were highly effective, brought to effective.
Yeah. So two hundred and, two hundred and forty-five teachers have moved from highly effective to effective. A hundred and.
It was a hundred and eight.
A hundred and eight teachers have moved from effective to highly effective. So the net change is going to be overall, a hundred and thirty-nine teachers have moved from highly effective to effective at the end of the day.
So the important thing is two hundred and forty-five teachers.
And a hundred and six have moved up.
But they don't, the ones that you'll hear from, the two hundred and forty-five.
And I will tell you, this is.
And this is all based on that VAM score from last year?
Yeah, and, you know, and this is whether it's per, whether it's the local assessment, whether it's FSA, those are the impact of it.
Which it was. We never did get the data. And I did ask for it.
On that, on that chart.
Was it FSA or was it PER?
It's a, it's a variety of assessments. I can give you the rest.
Yes, please. I appreciate that.
So then we move forward. We'll have the conversation.
All right, any board comments? Mr. Davis, anything?
No, I'm going to move my changes of change earlier, if that's okay.
Yeah, we moved it on.
So we get, thank you so very much. That way that we get so many people out of here, so.
And then we changed first book dates, so you all are available now.
I will be there.
And we do have over two thousand signatures, so we will be bringing forty thousand books.
That's awesome.
On the twenty-first, arriving on the twentieth, so we'll be asking for volunteers to help level the.
All right, on that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.